Okay, we want to, tonight, November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, I am Leslie Jones. I will be, uh, sitting in the place of Mayor Hakes tonight. He is not able to join us, so we want to recognize his, um, his absence. But also, Councilmember Reed is at a solid waste district meeting. He will be joining us a bit later this evening. Councilman Carlson, did I call him Councilman Reed? Councilman Carlson. So we will start with invocation by Councilmember Beck, followed by a pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Garrett.
Our dear, kind heavenly Father, we're very grateful for the opportunity we have to meet as a council and to meet with, uh, those in our city. And we're grateful for the opportunities before us. We're grateful for the city staff and all that they do to make our city better. We're grateful for engaged public and please bless us with wisdom today and understanding. We know that these topics today are important, and so please bless us that we can have an open, um, an open ear and be able to understand the topics at hand. We love thee and we are very grateful for where we live. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
We invite everyone to stand and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to recognize Councilmember Carlson has returned from his meeting and is joining us now. We have a public, public forum. Let's see, just a minute, we'll see what, who signed up for the public forum. We have a few people that have signed up for the public forum. This is an opportunity for members of the public, for the members of the audience, to bring to the attention of the mayor and council any item that is not on the agenda. So we'll start with Blyden Lautenstock.
Thank you very much. I enjoyed talking with some of you before. My name is Blyden Lautenstock. I'm one of those Southern California transplants to get away from it and a current resident of Warren for, for over thirty years. My son-in-law, my daughter, my three grandkids live here in Mapleton, so I have an interest in what's going on in your community here. I'm a retired high school coach, also a retired refereeing umpire at the high school and collegiate levels. I mean, we had been involved in the Mountain West, West Coast, Big West and WAC conferences. I've served with the Utah School Activities Association overseeing officiating in high school baseball. I only mention my background because it's given me the opportunity to associate in many athletic circles and has allowed me to become acquainted with many coaches, administrators, parents and civic leaders. Being retired, I've enjoyed a part-time job at UBU. I guess you all know Utah Valley University. As an usher and to provide security for several different activities, which also includes high school playoffs and championships for several, for several sports that are played there. Recently, I was working the high school girls' state volleyball championships when Maple Mountain High School, uh, won the girls' state five A championship. You should be proud, they were good. So that brings me as to why I'm here tonight. I'm here tonight to compliment, pay tribute, and I'm sorry that, um, Mayor Dallas Hakes is not here, but I'm here to pay tribute to your mayor, Dallas Hakes, who I think is a total class act, and make you aware of something, um, that I get a little choked up, somebody, there is a soft side of me. Something I observed that he did that I thought was quite unique. Want you to know, in all my years of being around athletics, I watched your mayor do something I've not witnessed before that I thought was very selfless. When you consider the fact that he came as a mayor of this community, he supported the girls from your community, and I didn't realize, I'd never thought about it, that, um, that playing, um, the, the, the girls, Maple Mountain, playing for a high school that's technically outside of Mapleton. It's in the confines of the city of Spanish Fork. So technically, Maple Mountain is a high school for which your mayor has no jurisdiction. However, what he did was this. He, and I know because I ended up talking to him prior to the match, the game, from the floor, found out he was the mayor, and I did something I'm normally not allowed to do. And, um, he did this. He had had several T-shirts made up in advance showing Maple Mountain Girls' Five A State Volleyball Champions, which he was prepared to hand out and to give to every player and coach on the floor in case they won, which they did, and for which he personally paid for out of his own pocket. Put simply, I would that every city should have a mayor like yours, wow. So, that being said, I'm sorry that he's not here. I was hoping to see him face-to-face. I did make the comment that, you know, it was a classy thing you did, Dallas, and, and I said, "Don't be surprised if I show up at one of your meetings." So I'm here, he must have known I was coming, that's why he's not here. Uh, Dallas, um, I know that he'll watch this, so let me just say, Dallas, thank you for your kindness and great example. Your city's fortunate to have a mayor to have you as their mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lautenstock. In fact, while you were speaking, I sent him a quick text to bring, to bring his attention to your remarks. And, uh, did you ever associate with girls' high school softball?
A little bit, mostly baseball.
Mostly baseball. I know your name and when I used to teach at the high school. I, we've had interaction at some level.
We probably have, it's probably when you were yelling at some of my calls.
That might be it, that might be it.
I don't know a lot of names.
Well, thank you for joining us tonight. Don Garlets, do you have a...
Thank you, council. I'm a resident and I, I guess I didn't know the procedure, so my intent was to come and make some comments on item number four on the agenda, so should I wait until...
No, let me, uh, the, the, the item number four is simply a discussion item. It is not for public hearing. We would ask that you, because of the public forum this time, we just ask that you keep your comments, your remarks brief to no more than two to three minutes.
Okay, but may I speak to that issue?
You may, yes.
Okay, okay. So, um, I think we're, uh, many of the, of the neighbors are aware of the request to make some changes to the, the way the subdivision's laid out. I get the issue that the developer has. I mean, essentially, they bought some property that they thought was going to be useful in a certain way and is not. And that's a bummer, and I feel for them in that respect. My concern is that with, uh, the, the layout that was previously approved, the minimum lot size was an acre, which would result in, you know, home values that are going to have a certain value. And the request now is to have, I think, eight or nine properties in there that are going to be roughly a half an acre. So just as a local resident, my concern is that that ends up with, uh, home values that are going to be significantly lower than they would have otherwise been in a, in a situation where home va, you know, where properties were at least an acre. And that just essentially has a downward effect on, uh, homes in the local area. So my, my concern is that that's going to not be awesome for the rest of the neighbors that live in the area, and so I'm not in favor, just wanted to state that, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Could we have a, Don, come back up. Good to see you.
Sure.
Um, do we, do you have a, a piece of land or is your home there? What, what, where are you in relation to...
So I live on sixteen hundred east.
Okay. Just want to please you.
Yeah, sixteen east and about ninth north, so not, not too, not quite a, a little more than a stone's throw, but not too far. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mike Jorgensen.
My comments will be real brief, they're similar to the gentleman that just, uh, spoke. Uh, I'm a landowner in the Maple Hills estate, and I, I won't belabor the point, but I've got some real concerns when the appropriate time is to, to discuss. And we're just here tonight to hear the proposals that are going to be discussed.
Great, thank you, Mike. Michael Gilbert.
Essentially the same thing, so I didn't understand the process, so...
That's okay.
Thanks.
No problem at all. Now, I, I will, uh, well, we'll get to number four in just a moment, but thank you for your comments. We now have a congen, uh, consent agenda. Let's take a look at that and invite a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda item as has been laid out.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion to approve the consent agenda has been made by Councilmember Garrett and seconded by Councilmember Carlson.
Carlson, yes.
Egbert, yes.
Beck, yes.
Jones, yes.
Garrett, yes.
Thank you. Now, item number three, an action item. Uh, this is a presentation of the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three audit report. Bryce, we'll give you the floor.
I'll just give it over to Greg. Thank you, um, Greg's gonna present that at this point, thank you.
Great.
Thanks for letting me come and meet with you tonight. You should have had the financial statements and the management letter for several weeks. The management letter, I won't spend much time on. It's one finding and probably the best finding that a city can have, that you have too much money in your general fund, and so the fix is really easy there, and, and Bryce has already taken care of it by shifting it over to the capital projects fund for future projects, and so I won't belabor that one. I wanted to have you look at a graph and just consider it for a minute. It's on page eight of the financial statements. And it has red and blue bars, and this shows the net position or net worth of the city, and it's divided out between what's already been spent on capital assets, so land, equipment, buildings, things like that. That's the bottom section, and you can see twenty-two compared to twenty-three shows a fairly major increase. And then the restricted portion of your net position actually declined during the year, which, again, is a good thing. You want the, the restricted money to be used and to be used as it's needed. And then the last one, the, the very top one, is the unrestricted portion of the net position, and you can see, again, that that was an increase for the year. And so all of those are actually good things for the city. Next, I wanted to have you look on page sixteen. On page sixteen, we have the governmental fund types listed, and in that first column, the general fund column, three numbers up from the bottom, there's an amount unassigned, four million, four hundred and forty-three thousand. That's what resulted in the one finding in the management letter, that that was about seven hundred and fifty thousand, too high. Overall, the city's in great shape. Everything that you wanted to increase, increased during the year, and some of the things that you want to decrease, decreased during the year. And so overall, I think, I think everything looks good. I really appreciate all the help that I was given with Bryce and Cory and Camille and Sean. You've got a great staff and it's good to work with them. Are there any questions that you've come up with looking over this over the last month or so? All right, if not, if any come up at any point, don't hesitate to call. I'd like to talk with you, so...
Wonderful. Thank you for your, thank you for your time, and we do have a great staff.
Yes.
Yes, thank you so much. Okay, we have a, a discussion item. This is, uh, number four, item number four, discussion item. What? Oh yeah, we do, yep, I'm getting a little too antsy. Okay, we have a motion to approve the audit report. Or do we have a, a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the audit.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three audit report by Councilmember Egbert, and it's seconded by Councilmember Carlson.
Egbert, yes.
Beck, yes.
Jones, yes.
Garrett, yes.
Carlson, yes.
Okay. Now we're going, moving on to, uh, discussion item number four. This is the item, uh, this is a discussion item. There will be no votes taken, uh, the developer at this time, the developer on this project. Sean will give us some background, um, on this item. The purpose is to simply have a discussion, an open discussion, to explore some, some, we'll just discuss topics, and then we can go, Sean can explain the next steps after that.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. I actually do not see the representative from Patterson's here. I'm wondering if we'd go to administrative reports first?
Great.
And if, if they don't show, I would suggest we just continue that item.
I agree.
But they're, they're aware of it, obviously, I, I assume they were planning on being here, but...
I would think so.
So maybe we go to administrative reports and see if they come.
Yep, I think that's a great idea. Let's, uh, move to administrative reports first, and then we'll circle back if, um, that representative is here. So Sean, we'll start with you.
Nothing for me.
I have nothing to say.
Okay.
I just can say the solid waste district, transfer building is coming along quite well. We've been able to get a lot of asphalt done. Onings are going up, it looks, anyway, it's starting to look like a very nice structure. Do each of you, I think we have a, a, a visit set up, does anybody know where that's located, how to drive there? Because I don't have a good address yet. Okay, that sounds good. I didn't have your name on this, would you get it kept raw?
Yeah, I'm getting it.
With Sean?
Yeah, we've got it.
Okay, very good. So I wanted to invite more than just the names that I had, yeah. So that sounds good. That's all set up, and so it should hopefully even get done in an hour, but if you have more questions, we'll make it last longer.
Great, thanks, Reed.
So far, so good. We had a good meeting tonight. We're going for that extra bond, it should be settled like first part of December.
Thanks for representing on that topic, thank you. Councilmember Egbert?
There's a lot going on with the legislature right now. The one thing I'd want to draw your attention to, I forwarded this report out that I received last night, and it is, um, shortly public. It's the performance audit of Utah housing policy from the Office of the Legislative Auditor General. This is, uh, Reed laughs. This is a report on the status of housing in the state, and so I would draw your attention to, it, it's eighty-one pages. I got it last night, it's a good read. There was a, a league board meeting today to establish our position on this, but, um, I, I just want to quickly go through the findings and recommendations for your, uh, pondering. Uh, there aren't, there are like eight or nine, so it's, it'll be quick. So findings, one point one, time is running short to accelerate action on housing policy. One point two, Utah should adopt state-level measures and targets for housing needs and construction. Two point one, the legislature could change local land use regulations to overcome regulatory limits on population growth. Let's pause there. Two point two, to encourage statewide housing goals, Utah could implement incentives and penalties for non-compliance. Three point two, concerns about city compliance with specific requirements and timeliness were largely unfounded. That's a win right there. So we've had a lot of complaints that, oh, cities are deliberately pushing back so we can't build density, we can't build, they're taking, kicking cans. So this audit found that that was not true, and they actually published it. The other findings, a whole different conversation, but at least that one's in there, so that was nice. Recommendations, one point one, the legislature should require the creation of state-level strategic plan for housing in Utah, including goals to address the current housing shortage and forecasted population growth. One point three, the legislature should consider the range of state-level policy opt, they're missing one point two on their list. Policy options presented in this report to create a program to set and manage state-level housing production targets. Two point two, the legislature should consider options to increase zoning density on a wide scale within the state. Two point three, the legislature should consider policy options to craft additional penalties and incentives associated with housing targets to better ensure local government compliance. Three point one, as part of any statewide housing strategic planning, the legislature should consider metrics to better track both actual and potential housing production. They're really critical of the use of the entitled units as not an effective measure, even though we know there are a hundred and ninety thousand entitled units in the state now, because what they want to see is which ones have infrastructure pulled to them, but then there's a conversation about is their funding related to the infrastructure in the first place? So it's a little chicken or the egg scenario. There is no requirement for policy to come out of this audit, but as you can imagine, this is going to inform a lot of conversation that I had hoped we had abandoned. As we discussed at the league today, there are really three to four of these that are particularly concerning, that strip local government of, of our rights for, for zoning and for implementing the things we're already doing based on the legislative changes. So those will be challenging. And there's a few things that are really not a big deal, having, as long as cities have a, have a seat at the table with strategic planning and things, those aren't bad, and establishing different measures across the state, those aren't, those, those are good ideas, so... But there are a few things in here that I was, gave me a little pause. There's some choice of phrasing in here that I found particularly concerning. For example, it said if the legislature, in summary, if the legislature passed regulations requiring cities to do certain things, that the good thing would be it would provide cover to city municipal leaders. It's actually that phrasing, provide cover, is in this report. So the, as, as I've discussed, the lowly municipal babies are, um, for the record, is, is a challenge for me to, to receive that. So this is going public. There is the, the league got it in advance, there's a league response to each of those bullets at the end, so I'd encourage you to read the report. But we are going to run into a whole lot of, um, stripping of power closest to the people issues again this session, so it really doesn't... I don't have anything else to say from my report. This is enough for me today.
Is, is the league's response in this report?
It is. So there's two sets of responses in the report. They did give it to the league, it's, you know, the process is collegial and everything, and, and there are, like, like we've discussed on this, when we were voting on the priorities today in the league meeting, there were really three things, which you can assume what they were based on what I read, that we were like, oh no, these are, these are no deals, so...
So, so last, last year we had a chance to, to meet and yell at our representatives. Are we going to have the opportunity again?
Oh, there's always opportunity.
Right, but like, a, a formal, formal meeting.
It'll, it's, the response you'll see, it's very, it's, it's, it's very collegial, and there is no, there, this report is a report, it doesn't require legislative response, but there's already enough stuff on the table that this will, uh, add fire to, to create a sense of urgency to remove cities' rights, for example, to zone the way they want to zone. So there's, there's, this, this will support some of that. There are many issues with, with the content in here. For example, some of the recommendations, they talk about, um, setting up quotas, but it doesn't go into the specific quotas of are these quotas related to starter homes? What, what are the quotas? So there's a lot of detail missing, so there's a lot, there's, there's TBD in it, but it's scary enough to me, someone who believes that government closest to the people, that I find it really, um, disheartening. So, just, just the FYI, this, it's more than I expected, but it's going to be a fun session, people. Buckle in.
Who funded it, or who's?
This is through the Legislative Auditor General, so it's, it's...
It's a public office that's...
Correct. Yeah, there's lots of detail in there, and, and like I said, a lot of it is, I'd, I'd support. I support better data, I support better, better information. But there are, there are biases that, that I don't share. So that's my, my long, I'm sure there's all kinds of other things to report on, but...
Great, thank you, thank you for sharing that.
Just to piggyback on that too, I, I believe, uh, the, the league has done a really good job of talking to legislation about the concerns that us as cities have with this. But to Councilmember Egbert's point, this one's, this isn't a big topic. And I've been in this for about twenty-five years, and this is, uh...
Pretty bold.
Yeah.
Fortunately, I mean, from a administrative perspective, so Seth Perrins from Spanish Fork was on the call today and, and had, it was really a consensus about where these, these urgencies are, but he does a great job representing administrators for the league, so, uh, we'll, we'll see what comes of it.
Thank you for your help in that regard.
Yeah, thank you.
Your heart's in the right place.
I, I don't have anything.
Nope, I don't have a report.
I don't have anything either. Well, I wasn't here last meeting, and I wanted to, to publicly thank the, everybody who was involved in this community cleanup. Sorry, I got something in my throat. Um, it was another great success, lots and lots of, um, great, uh, community involvement and, and volunteer hours, and, and big thanks to the city staff, and especially to the, um, Solid Waste District for providing the dumpsters and, and, uh, the loader. That was awesome.
And that dumpster remained full the whole week, so it was, well, four dumpsters at a time, but...
Yeah, I, I sat out there for four hours on the Saturday morning, and every time they brought a dumpster, it was filled within about three minutes. It was crazy. So another successful community cleanup, thank you for everybody's help on that.
Great, thanks for overseeing that. Camille? Cory?
We addressed my topic so far, so...
Bryce?
Uh, just to have on your radar the budget amendments coming up, um, in January.
Okay, budget amendments, and, uh, Mr. Minor.
I always have good things.
Uh, first, I just want to give a reminder, November twenty-seventh is our Lights On Festival. We have a special visitor today from Santa, he was in the park checking the lights. We missed a couple, so we're on the naughty list, so we'll get those fixed and we'll be ready. So it'll be fun. At six P.M.? Yep, that starts at six P.M. So I invite you all, come, get your smells on and your smores cooked and your hot cocoa. So it'll be fun. The next one, we've been thinking of the Christmas time and our Christmas trees, and as a staff, we've come up with a new idea, and we wanted to run it past all of you and get a level of, uh, interest from you. Obviously, there's still some things, as we've talked through, from probably an insurance side that we need to just clarify. But as you're all aware, we, we bring a dumpster in, um, at the end of Christmas, and residents can bring their Christmas trees, and we put them in there, and it seems like every year it gets more and more and more, and I don't know the exact numbers. I'm sure Camille could probably find out what those are. But we've heard of a couple cities that are taking those trees and then putting them and doing a big bonfire, and then having a community event centered around it. And so, uh, we were at a training a, a month or so ago, and somebody had brought it up, and we thought, man, that's, that's a fun idea. What can we, what could we do to, to turn it into something that was, that's better than just taking a bunch of trees to the dump? So one of, one of the ideas that, uh, we've come out of, we've come up with a name called Burn Bright, and it would be, uh, two parts. One, getting the community together, we could just, uh, the fire department, we've had conversations with Chief Glasgow. He would be very much involved, making sure that we're doing everything necessary that, that we would need to. Uh, we feel confident if we were passing our fireworks, we feel like we can pass, we can pass this. But in working with him, obviously, we'd find, find the parameters of what we need to be able to have, probably have some, uh, little fire pits around, families could gather and watch what it was. But the real intent, uh, behind it would be that we would, um, give everybody an opportunity to think of their New Year's resolutions, and we'd have little, uh, wood plaques that we would, uh, have a brand with our brand on it, we'd brand on one side, and on the other side, they could write their New Year's resolution as their goal. That's something they could take with them. And then we would also have a book or a, a box that they could write something that they want to forget from the year, and we'd put that into the fire, and then when it goes up, all those would go in the past, and then you have something to look forward to, so...
It's very earthy, mother-earthy.
Yeah.
That's funny, my question was, what's the environmental impact on burning that much stuff?
I think it'd be awesome.
I love the, I love the, I, I love the concept, but I definitely want to make sure we're offsetting any, anything environmentally that would be appropriate.
Yeah, and obviously, we're...
Earth dust to dust.
That's right.
Where would it be?
Uh, we'd, we'd hold it here, here at the city office. Yeah, on our vacant lot here to the, to the west.
So what I'm hearing is imagine potentially hundreds of dried Christmas trees...
You got it.
...with a match. I think it is awesome. Can I light a match?
In a controlled burn, right?
I was just going to say, I'll support it if I get to be the one to light it.
I want to light it.
Obviously, we don't want to teach kids it's okay to just go start fires. That's why we would make sure it's controlled.
Do some safety education associated.
Yeah, and, and as we've talked about it, we've definitely, there's so many avenues you can take on it, right? We is, as the Parks and Rec, we didn't want to just say, hey, we want to go burn a bunch of trees. We wanted a why behind we wanted to burn a bunch of trees, and that's just what we do. So, um, we kind of came up with this idea of out with the old and with the new, and, and then...
It's kind of a Running Man, Mapleton style.
Yeah.
And we can take all the sticker weeds and pile them up and burn them too.
It's funny that you say that, we, we had thought about that too. But no getting pre...
Burning Man.
Not on a bad air quality day though, because we look really bad.
Yeah. Well, and not, one, one thing that we did, uh, think about was obviously burn permits and when we can have them, we would, we would definitely reach out to the county and make sure that they were aware of what was going on. That's the last thing that, you know, we don't want everybody thinking the city's exempt from things that everybody else is.
We're doing our part to keep the landfills free.
That's what I'm saying, if it offsets, I'm, I'm okay with it. I think it sounds really cool, I like the idea of looking... I like the idea of looking hopefully forward. You know, I think it's, it's a great community activity and create, will create those connections. So, very cool.
Yeah. Well, we'll do a little bit more research. I have not gotten with our insurance. So, we will craft a really good conversation for them of all the good things that it'll do.
They tend to be dream killers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll make sure that we'll just invite them to it, so they can experience the joy.
Yep.
So, anyways, that's all I've got. Oh, actually, one other thing. I do want to give a shout out to our park staff. They are 95% done with putting the lights up. This will be the first time in my time being here that they'll get to be home during Thanksgiving and not stressed about getting things up. So, a big shout out to Zach and Tajan Wyatt for getting, getting in and getting it done. It's, it's really awesome. Um, we got some new things this year that we're excited. I'm not gonna spoil any of what those things are, but hopefully, everybody will come and you can see what they are, so...
Great. Thanks, Logan, and you do have a great staff. Yep. Thank you. That's exciting. I want to light the fire.
I'll do.
Mine's super quick as well. Last Tuesday night, we had our first community preparedness event over next door here. It was awesome. Well, it actually had a couple people show up that weren't signed up to show up, so we'll give that an A+. That went well. And the next one, just to get on your radar, will be first part of February, and it'll be digital safety is what we'll call it. So, we'll get some more information out on that. And then, I'm glad he's here and brought up the volleyball team taking state, kind of evolving into the cooperation between Spanish Fork and Mapleton when those teams do take state. There, a lot of our kids are there, but he's right, it is in Spanish Fork. But that particular night, uh, the Spanish Fork Fire and our fire departments met here in Mapleton and did the parade through Mapleton and then down through Spanish and then back up. So, we're hoping we'll be able to continue that and have it in both cities, uh, moving forward. The only problem with the volleyball one is it was really long. It was, it was a long route, so we'll have to, we'll have to figure that out a little bit, 'cause it was kind of cold out there. But it was super cool to see, and I think it was important for a lot of those Mapleton girls to be able to go through our town too. So, that was pretty neat. So, we'll keep working on that.
Thank you, Chief.
Can I just add that, I don't know if I'm out of line here, but out of all the, we saw a lot of schools, and the comment was made with our staff, um, that probably one of the most well-behaved and polite, uh, schools that we dealt with as far as the parents are concerned was your commander.
That's great feedback.
That's us on the back.
Thank you. That's great feedback. Okay. I think that's it for administrative reports. Uh, Sean is the applicant, the representative here that we were waiting on? Okay. Oh, there he is, back here. Okay. Let's return to the discussion item, item number four. Sean, why don't you give us some background?
Thank you, members of the commission. As you mentioned at the start of the meeting, the purpose of this is just to provide an opportunity for the council to provide, to give some feedback to the applicant. No formal application has been made yet. That's why there hasn't been any noticing or, um, public outreach on this yet. It's just an opportunity for you to provide some, have a discussion and provide some feedback to the applicant. Just some background, so in 2018, the city council approved the Maple Hills subdivision, which consisted of 26 lots on about 38 acres. Uh, the approval included 25 roughly one-acre lots, and then there was one large 11-acre parcel. After the approval, Patterson Construction or Patterson Homes purchased the property minus the 11-acre portion. Uh, and then later, they bought an additional two acres that was previously owned by Tim Kreiser. Both of those properties, prior to Patterson, um, purchasing them and prior to the Maple Hills approval, were approved as TDR-receiving sites. So, that's, that's been in place for a number of years. Uh, they have recorded a couple of the plaits, including eight lots. Two of those lots have been sold. One of the, um, owners of those lots is who spoke briefly at the start of the meeting tonight. During the recent geotech studies that were required for the next phase of the project, it was identified that there's a fault area that are impacting the original proposal. And so, that's what's kind of started the discussion between staff and the applicant of being able to look at possibly some reconfiguration of the lots, uh, and the property. Just to give you kind of an aerial view, uh, the, what you see on the back here in yellow is what was the original Maple Hills, um, 26 lots. This is the 11-acre parcel that was never owned by Patterson and is owned by a separate property owner. And then this is the Kreiser piece, um, that was purchased later on, the two acres. The Jorgensen's who are here tonight that spoke, I believe they own this, this lot here. Uh, so this kind of shows, uh, some of the fault areas and how they impacted the, uh, the original layout. And so, um, oh, one additional comment on the background is, as you know, we recently adopted the Trails Master Plan, and one of the things that we were showing on the plan is potentially a trailhead location here, which would be the only location north of, or north of the canyon. Uh, so the applicant has submitted a couple of revised concepts, uh, just to, to get some feedback on. The thought with this concept is that they would, or in both concepts, is they would apply to rezone the property to PRC. Uh, as you know, the PRC zone allows you more flexibility in lot size and configuration. It doesn't give you more density than you otherwise would have been allowed. It just allows for flexibility in lot sizes. And so, under this concept, they would need to work with those property owners, 'cause that changes the configuration of those lots and the location of the road. Uh, but the idea would be to have these lots being larger, but the buildable area outside of the, the fault protection area. Um, and it also includes this trailhead parking and trail access to the bench. Uh, the second concept was if they were unable to, to work with those property owners, um, in this concept, they would be giving a larger parcel to the city. It says city park on the plan. Uh, we don't anticipate the city wanting to construct a park here. We may be open to receiving it as open space, just like much of the TDR property, but we would not anticipate that a park would be located there. Um, so really, what we're here to discuss is, is the city council supportive of some trail access at this location? Would you be open in general to an, an application for a PRC zone? If the applicant moves forward, that's when we would start formal, um, public hearing processes with the planning commission and ultimately the city council. Uh, are there questions and feedback on the concept plans? Uh, that's what we're kind of here tonight. Uh, the applicant's here to speak as well. Um, under both of the concepts that we showed, uh, the total lots would have gone down from a, a max of 28 down to 25. So, it would be more land area included in the subdivision with fewer lots. Um, as you heard from some of the, uh, the neighbors, it does sound like they're concerned with the size of the lots. So, those are certainly things we can, we can discuss. But I would, I would recommend having the, uh, giving the applicant an opportunity to address the council, and then we can go through questions and comments.
Thank you. Will the applicant, uh, join us at the microphone, please? And please state your name and for the record.
Before I do that, I first need to apologize for being late. I appreciate your, uh, being on time, and I apologize for my tardiness. My name is Ross Welch. I'm with Patterson Construction and Patterson Homes. And so, could you go to the original plat that shows that fault line on it? Thank you. So, this is the, the plat that we, uh, when we purchased the property, thought we'd be building in there and, and anticipated. So, we did the first phase, as you can see, as, as he mentioned, those lots that have already been done and had sold two of them, when we then, uh, did the inquiry regarding the fault line and, which affected eight of our lots. And so, then we have been looking at different options, and, and we've come up with various plans, but at the end of the day, we thought, well, what's the value of us working with these existing lot owners as we're trying to do these things if I haven't got your feedback back yet? So, we're looking first to get your comments, what your thoughts are, is this something you could support us in? And then, once we have that, then it helps us work with the landowners that have, when I say landowners, meaning the lot owners who have purchased from us, and trying to work that through as well. But, so I'm trying to say, would the council, and I know this is a stretch, this is something that's impacted us quite a bit too, is not what we anticipated when we purchased this property. But, um, would the council be willing for that type of zoning in this area if we're not increasing density? So, I was hoping for some feedback on that.
Great. Thank you, Ross.
Thank you.
So, this is a discussion item. It's an opportunity for council members to talk openly and, and ask questions of the applicant. And Sean, thank you for framing the discussion with those three, three points.
This would be a question for Ross or Sean. Which, uh, which eight were platted?
The ones that are platted. The aerial's probably the easiest to see. You can see on here, you've got these lots at the north end, and then these two lots on the south end. So, the road goes through to here, those lots, and then those two.
Okay. And then, Sean, a question for you. In option two, um, can the trailhead go on the other side of the street?
Uh, parking area?
Yeah.
The parking area? Yeah, for, that certainly could, it could be adjusted.
Now, when a PRC zone is approved prior to any kind of land development, you know, from scratch, we, uh, the attraction of a PRC to me is that you create, have some somewhat creative types of developments. I'm assuming with a PRC, if a PRC were to be applied here, because the roads and infrastructure are largely in, we're not going to see a lot of variation from what these plaits are. Is, is that fair, or...
Uh, it, it depends. I mean, we're still working through that. Um, I think the, the appeal for staff with the PRC concept is the ability to address the, the access, the trail access.
Sure.
And potentially getting more open space.
And I'll be, I'll be clear too, it's trail access, not necessarily park space.
Correct.
Right? Yeah.
I, I'll just speak to what my initial overall concept of it is, um, I'm not opposed to a, a PRC zone to, to, um, make flexible-sized lots. I think that's been done very well in other areas of town and been very successful. Uh, definitely are some concerns, especially landowners and people who've already purchased lots. That's, that's a concern. But in general, I think, um, working through details is definitely worth doing. It's, I, I, I love the idea of more open space for the city, and I love the idea of trail access. Those are very big, uh, incentives that we've been pushing pretty hard for in the city, so...
With a PRC zone, what is the, uh, uh, scope of lot size, right? I mean, can you speak to that?
It's really dictated by the council.
Okay.
Ultimately.
Because I, I, my, my primary concern, and Ross, I'm sure you can identify this, with this, if you were a lot owner, right? Buying something and then having, regardless of the reasons why, um, the changes are, the unexpected changes are very difficult for these lot owners. I, I like the idea, and I'm very open to a PRC zone conversation. I would not feel comfortable with seeing, you know, a third acre on up to, in this location, that doesn't feel, that doesn't feel right, so...
I have a little bit of a question about the zone. Is that, uh, is that a mandatory no-build, or is it suggested not to build? And if you're, say, like, 100 feet away from the zone, does that mean your home's protected? I, it seemed like it, the whole area is a danger zone.
So, the, the area in the red is the, the setbacks that is recommended by the geotech for any habitable structure. So, yes, the, uh, is, is it perfect? Does that mean that once you're outside of that, you're not going to be impacted if there's an event? No. But this is the, this is the recommendation to maintain.
But it's a recommendation. It isn't, it isn't a rule. It's just the recommendation.
Yeah. I mean, I suppose the city, if we wanted to, could say, yes, you could build there. Obviously, you don't want to go against the geotechnical recommendations, and it sounds like Ross has got some comments on it.
I was just trying to figure out where the rules were.
Yeah.
It's a recommendation. So, I got a little education on this. There were, those two lines, actually, that whole area is called a grove. And so, if a fault does, I mean, if it does enact and react, that area will drop. And so, they're just saying you can't have anything buildable in that area. No, excuse me, habitable. So, for those homes, you could put, you know, a little, uh, you want to put a barn or something, that'd be fine. But nothing habitable should be in that area. Uh, the other thing I thought was interesting, after doing, after they did the test digs and looked at the fault line and so forth, we were a little surprised pleasantly that the setback only had to be 25 feet off the fault line. So, there, in terms of the severity of it and so forth, they're saying if nothing, uh, structure-wise is within 25 feet of it, it should be all right that way.
So, your building envelope could be that close?
Yes.
Right?
So, what we've done is, we've put the 25 feet on and then pushed the building envelope beyond that for our thing. But yes, that's...
I see.
So, does this require extra earthquake protection to construction in the home, or we just build it to normal standards?
Yeah. The, what would happen is you'd have a geotech do a site-specific soils report, once you know where the buildings are going, and the geotech would provide recommendations on if there were additional measures they'd recommend.
For, for the 11 acres that are no longer part of the application, that, that's pretty much, you can't build on those 11 acres, right?
Uh, they do have some area. I mean, this is, this gets steep, but there is some small areas that maybe...
Okay.
It's challenging.
Yeah.
Well, it appears to me that the PRC is, is, that's the mechanism to solve the problem. The, in principle. So, I have principles that I agree with, with this, but some of those have to, so that with, with doing that, that specific zoning, I think it's a great tool in the toolbox to solve a problem. Um, I don't know if these options as presented, uh, would be ones that I'm supportive of. I'm very sensitive to the existing lots that have been sold, um, and how these people, the, these landowners had an expectation that they would have another one single house behind them, not a road, not a parking lot, not a, I, I think there are some important considerations about, about what these property owners bought into. Likewise, with, with what the zoning, the zoning would have allowed with half acres, I'm not, I'm not opposed to creative solutions. I think this situation kind of calls for it. But I have particular sensitivity to honoring the, the investments that the current landowners have made on the property, but not opposed to, to this special zoning for this very unique situation. So, my guidance is, yeah, we got to keep, keep working through this for, for sure, but with a priority to the existing owners.
Are both lot owners here, or just Mike? The other one's not here? Okay. Just curious. Well, we'll, uh, have those discussions, and we have our public comment, uh, when we address this topic, uh, after the application is made.
But absolutely. I, I think the whole entire area should be considered, absolutely. There's a big impact to changing a zone. Massive impact. Yeah. I know that. Okay.
The conversation, it sounds like, needs to, we will consider creative solutions. I don't feel personally, these two are quite, quite there yet to respect the existing owners and the surrounding neighbors. But I think heading this direction is what we'll, we'll need to do to solve it. I think the trail access is essential. I, I would not want to compromise that.
Yeah. Any, any other thoughts, comments by the council? The applicant, Ross, did you have a, did you make a motion to say something?
Oh, I probably should delay it for another time. But I would just.
That count to 10 before you open your mouth?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I, I do know that the neighbors are concerned. Normally, the big concern tends to be how it impacts property values. None of these lots are less than half an acre, which if you want to go to our development of half acre lots in Alpine, you'll see that you build really nice homes on half acres. And then the other concern tends to be density or traffic, of which this is less dense than what was previously approved for this development. So we're not adding, even though the lots are smaller, we're not adding any more traffic. In fact, we're getting less traffic than what was previously approved for this development. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you for your input. I appreciate that. It'll be helpful.
I would, I would add some clarity to my, my comments on that. Mine don't reflect a density concern. They reflect a configuration concern. So if you had a, a lot where you thought a, another owner would be hiding you, not a road, not a parking lot, that, so it's configuration for me. It's not necessarily.
And we've been working with those property owners with different options and opportunities. So anyway.
Okay, thank you. That's it? No motion needed on that one?
Okay. Well, there's no motion, no, no vote, no nothing today. We will resume this conversation as after the applicant makes an application. And I would invite the applicant to continue to work with those two lot owners and be mindful of some of the concerns and observations that have been shared today, tonight. So. Okay, um, looks like that's, that's it, right? We have a, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moving to adjourn the meeting.
Oh.
I don't know who won on that, but I'll, I'll second your, yeah, right.
Okay, gotta write somebody down.
Um, right down there and I'll second it.
All right. Theron makes a motion to adjourn and Councilmember Beck seconds that. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.